So it's 6:05 and I'd like to call this meeting of Rutland Town School Board to order. Everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first up is approval of the agenda, additions, deletions, and changes. I would like to move resignations to partly in executive session and then after executive session. And also because Chris will be a little late and he has some information regarding the old business, I'd like to move new business and finance up and old business below finance. Need a motion?
Sorry, you said move new business and finance up?
Um, no.
Old business under finance.
Yeah, old business after finance.
Okay, yeah, so move those two up.
I'll make that motion of those changes.
Thank you, Abby. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, unanimous. Great. First up is teacher, staff, and community comments. Does anyone have any? Alright, moving on to staff and student highlights.
It's hard to look here and you in fact.
Oh, no problem.
So I have a put together little slideshow.
Okay.
So am I allowed to present it now?
Um, sure. Can you share it with me?
I can.
Or did you?
I have it ready because I'm.
Oh, yeah, if you can present it.
I can.
Let's see if you can do that, okay. Will it let her? I don't know.
Let's see what happens. Now it's gonna make me share it with you again, Sarah. Let's see. There we go.
Great.
Alright, give me one second here.
And just for people watching this at home later, our preschool teachers, Sean DeBois and Erin Bourne are here to present.
Information. Yeah, I'm just making it better for you. Okay. And then I'm going to. Yes, you're welcome. So it's just gonna change every five seconds. So we've been talking about building community in our classrooms and so some of the things we've been working on to do that with our kids is we have, we both have weekly jobs in our classroom for the kids to work on. We've been talking about what's a friend and sharing what that looks like, what it feels like, what it sounds like. We both have like a cozy space or a corner in our classroom for the kids to go and hang out when they feel like being by themselves. We've been working on doing appreciations, so I think it's easy to say, hey, I like your hair, I like your dress, but really talking about, I appreciate it when you, you know, held the door open for me or something. So it's just going a little bit beyond like what the physical things are. And then we also have been working on doing different types of breaths. So I do a lot of yoga breaths in my classroom this morning and different yoga poses. So we do like elephant breaths and monkey breaths, and our favorite is a lion breath. And I show you, but it's ridiculous. And they just jump out with breaths and then they make up some. They do like butterfly breaths and they make up all kinds of funny things. And then also yoga poses like falling stars and working on holding a pose and, you know, bending over and breathing in and out to kind of control ourselves. We also do a lot of composting in my classroom. And in, for Thanksgiving, instead of like working on feasting and things like that, we're gonna be working on what, Friendsgiving. So like everybody bringing something in to share in a bowl and then like kind of sharing a snack they got, so doing a Friendsgiving. And then also we work on a common language. So when we were in preschool, a lot of our problems are around, you've got my toy, or I want what you've got, or you're too close to me and I want to be alone. So working on some common language for them to say, okay, please stop. And then thinking about what is there, what is, what's going on, like what's the problem? And then what's next to kind of solve that? So giving them some skills in solving their own issues or problems, challenges without always having to look for a teacher or getting upset, though we still get upset. But we're giving them those tools to do that. And then what have we been busy with? So this, so far this year, we've been to the halfway farm for a field trip, which was amazing even though it sprinkled on us. And then we've been, both are doing Big Buddies with, I have eighth graders and you do too. And then this week, we're also gonna be little buddies to fourth graders, so we're gonna medium-sized buddies. So Big Buddies and Medium-sized Buddies we're having. And then Hillary Lambert, you've probably heard this from a bunch of teachers, but she's doing like Farm to Table and Healthy Foods. And so she's coming in once a month to do like a cooking activity with our kids and she's like, amazing, we love her. We had apple sandwiches last month, which were really fun. Not many people ate them, but they're fun.
But we tried.
We did try.
They try.
We do try.
Huge.
And we do a lot of cooking in my classroom, so we've made applesauce cake and applesauce and orange juice and banana cake and chocolate chip muffins and sugar cookies and all kinds of good things that are not really good for you. But it's kind of fun. The applesauce is really healthy right now. Minimal sugar. It's just when you put the sugar in the cake. Then we've also been doing four wins in our classroom. We had our first one today and Mrs. Bro and Ms. Colette, I'm not saying her name right, I'm sorry about that.
Colette, yeah.
Colette, yeah. And they came in today and like, they were like amazing, like really amazing. I know you know all about it, Tina, because you do it too. And the kids had so much fun. We were tearing apart wood on my carpet, looking for rotting whatever, bugs and worms and spiders, and they were all there. And it was really good because we just read The Ant Hotel and it was just a perfect book and so they were like really into it. And then we do Woodsy Wednesday in my classroom and Erin does Forest Fridays. You do walks on Friday. And, yeah, and then also we're doing mystery readers. I haven't started yet, but Erin is.
We do mystery readers like weekly in my classroom. Fridays, parents like surprise the kids and come in, which is so fun. And then also like along with the Big Buddies in our classroom, like it's almost like an open door. I have a lot of older kids from the little siblings and like today, we were just eating breakfast and two little girls came in to read stories while we're eating breakfast. So, I mean, community is huge with the kiddos that we're trying to build.
Yeah, it's great. And it's really great, we share time outside together. And our kids have friends in both classrooms. It's really fun to watch, it's really good to watch. Yeah. Any questions, any comments, any thoughts, any feelings?
I love that you're doing a lot of community building. I think it's great to start them early with trying to figure out ways to problem solve with friends and.
Yeah.
It's great.
It's big. And you know, it's really funny, like, anyway, so we also work on what helps, what calms you down. And so I've been doing this elevator up thing with the kids too, so like where we kind of get in trouble, our feelings are here, right? And so like, wow, when I'm mad, like everything I do is like from here and so, okay, let's bring the elevator up and tap, 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 there's a brain that lives in here, you know, kind of thing. And wow, looking back is 2020, right? And so what could we do differently the next time and how did that feel? And how do you think the other person? So taking perspective of the other person's feelings and it's like amazing to watch the growth that they, they do. Sometimes it doesn't feel like it when you're in the moment, but I had the opportunity last year to have our coach come in and she did an observation at the beginning of the year and then the end of the year, I think it implemented these things. And she said like, just anecdotally, she said, oh my gosh, there's a huge difference. Like, it's like amazing how it works and so.
That's great.
Even when it feels like you're like, oh, it is working, yeah.
Thank you so much for sharing.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Anything else, questions?
Creeschool's a great place to be. Sorry to miss Bourne, I got, the preschoolers a little riled up in her classroom today with some.
The knock-knock jokes.
No, it's okay. She's like, Miss Stetsla, just came into God's chaos.
Yep, it's always a good time. You're always welcome.
Yeah, your classrooms are amazing places to be and I'm so happy that we have the community building that, you know, that's, we had that years ago and just to bring that back and it's good for everybody.
Yeah, and I just found out today, we didn't get the full map, but we did a little Rotary grant and we got partially funded, so now I'm looking for the rest of the money. Haven't given up yet. There's always other options, right? To do like a little drama music movement internship with the kids, so, yeah, yeah, it's gonna be fun.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, next up is new business. We'll talk about the FastBridge assessment. Okay, so I am going to present. So we would like to thank Al Gregorich, we're so sad, our data guru for the district, we're so sad that he is leaving us at the end of December. And he was nice enough to sit down with all administrators and then come sit down with Mike and I to show us how to get these data presentations. So if you have any questions, let us know. We may not have all the answers for you tonight, but we can find them or get them to at a later date. So FastBridge is the assessment that we did use last year and we're using that in replacement of MAPS. So we're not doing FastBridge and MAPS and SABRIS and I'm sure there was another one that I'm missing cognia. We're just doing FastBridge. So it's meant as a screener and it's given three times per year. So I won't go through what all of the assessments are and Mike, feel free to chime in too at any time here. So what we have, hopefully you guys can maybe, I don't know if everybody can see on the screen, but we have them in your packet as well. So we have the Early Reading for Kindergarten, First Grade. So this is early reading skills, concepts of print, phonemic awareness, phonics and fluency. So our first slide, we have our district data to compare. And then we have Rutland Town and kindergarten and first grade. And then our CBM reading, this is a curriculum-based measurement of oral reading fluency. So it measures concepts of print, phonological awareness, phonics, word recognition, and fluency for grades two to three. So again, they're a district, Rutland Town, grades two and three, grades four and nine. This is the auto reading, and is this the, this isn't the fluency one, right? What's the other one?
Right, this one is if the word, like the word is said to them through headphones and then they have to click the right one.
Right, and then they click the right one, correct. So again, district, and then we have Rutland Town, grades four, five, six, seven, and And then we have A reading for grades two through nine. If you have questions, just let me know. So again, it's just district, Rutland Town.
And this one is like a passage, so you can see it. It measures overall reading achievement, so they read a passage, answer questions about the passage.
Any questions, sorry? No problem. I noticed that the grades two and three seem to just have more trouble than the other grades. Is there any, have you like kind of thought about why or what's different in those grades compared to the others? Because kindergarten and first, their scores were higher. And those, they're read to usually, like those are often done one-on-one. A little different. Yeah, and then second grade. I feel like I had second grade do them one-on-one, but I think that was for U-Fly assessment. I'm getting that confused. I was just curious if there were thoughts of like why it's lower in, you know, kind of those subgroups versus others and if there's any, like what you're, I guess, trying.
Part of it could be with the K1 with the teacher, they do their assessments with the teacher. And then starting in grades two, they'll start doing them on the computer.
So maybe it's just that new.
It's a, it's a big adjustment, yeah.
But again, I mean, there's, teachers have time within PLC time, which is very much valued in our school, time to look at individual data. And I think we typically see a regression from the fall for all kids. And then we look at, like, again, this is a screener. So oftentimes, you know, we're learning more about this. And one of the things we as administrators met on is that we would love to take this assessment as well. That's, so we were able to figure out how to do that. So, and teachers have asked that too, because we just have questions like, this doesn't make sense, this is not a true picture, we know our kids. So maybe they scored really high or not so high and we just want more information, it may not be a true picture of that student. So it's not this Wednesday, the following Wednesday, I think, because SABRIS is this week.
Right.
That we, as all teachers, will be able to take this test as a student. So I think that will help us just become more familiar with the test, because for some teachers, this is new. And again, it's just meant as a screener. And so I think what we'll be looking at is when we do this again, to look at that growth too. Are there any questions on the literacy part before we move on to math? Okay, so math, again, we have early math and AMATH. So we have district, Rutland Town. I did maybe possibly snap a few of these pictures and send them to Chris, I'll just remind him how amazing Rutland Town is. So again, this is kindergarten and grade one, and then two through nine. So, do you want to talk a little bit about EST, Mike?
Yeah, definitely. So one thing we do three times a year is we'll take a look at data with teachers and we run a data protocol together so that we can take a closer look with them and see who, who do we have concerns on, what's going on, what can we do moving forward? If we might need to start universal interventions with them to then maybe later bring them to EST, depending on how those interventions go and how the data looks. So those, so one happened in early October, another will happen in February, and then in June. So that lines up with right after when the assessments are given three times a year. So they'll be given again in early January and then we can look at them in February. And then same for the end of the year, of course, we have them early summer.
And when you're looking at that data and, you know, trying to figure out universal intervention measure or tools to use, are you looking at low end, high ends right now?
We look at all kids. Yep, every student.
So that's one of the things that we, with MAPS, we had MAP Accelerator, which is to push kids a little bit further. So Becky Curtis did some digging and we were able to get Concept Quest through Bridges, which is more enrichment for grades two through five, so that's something new. And again, I just think having that PLC time and that trust within PLC group to really dive into data and look at, again, this is a screener, or whether it be Number Corner or FastBridge or SABRIS, which teachers will look at this tomorrow, just to have those conversations about teaching practice and what next and how to support all of our kids. And these scores were already shared with parents. Bridges, is that also used in sixth through? No. So Bridges is pre-K through five. And then college prep math is sixth, seventh, and eighth. And do they have an enrichment type program too? I don't think anything separate, no. Anyone have any questions? It'll be interesting to see how the second round goes. Yeah. Compared to the first. Oh, I do have another question. Last year was the first year we tried FastBridge. Did we try it in all grades? I couldn't remember. No, it was, we only did it in K6, but some of our seventh and eighth grade teachers wanted to use it because they wanted to get another measure, so it was just at Rutland Town. Because other schools did not, but we wanted to use it. And we're, again, we're learning with the students too, which is why we want to get in there as a student and take it ourselves. That's great. Thank you. Great. Thank you very much, Al, for all your time and dedication with getting the admin ready for, to do this without you. Appreciate it. And good luck with retirement. He's actually, he's not retiring, he's. Oh, with your next chapter. Yeah. You're welcome. Alright, so moving on to finance.
Okay. So in the packet was the budget and then there was a healthcare increases document. I think before we go into budget, there's a few things that I just wanted to talk briefly about. So the first one is the healthcare increases. So originally, when I started the process, I was estimating a 10% increase in healthcare. We just found out recently, in the last couple of weeks, that the increase that was submitted to the healthcare board is 16.4% for next year, which is pretty substantial. So I just wanted to highlight some, some numbers around that and put that in perspective a little bit. So in the last five years, if you don't have that document in front of you, so I provided the last five years of increases, and this is the fourth year with double-digit increases in the end five years, and they total 57.2%. If you compound that year over year, the increase in healthcare is actually a 71% increase. And I provided what those rates have gone from. And what I provided is just the employer portion. We pay 80% of the premium and the employee pays the other 20%. So if a single plan has gone from $6,180 to $10,553, a $4,300 increase. And again, that's just our portion. And family plans have gone from $17,000 to $29,000, a $12,000 increase. The full cost of a family plan is approximately $36,000 for next year. On top of that, there's also HRA costs. We pay between $2,000 and $2,200 for a single plan in an HRA, for an HRA, and we pay, I believe it's $4,000 to $4,400 for a family or two-person plan. So those are costs on top of the premium cost. For the full SU, at the bottom, I kind of highlighted what the total cost, impact on the SU is. And we'll talk a little bit more about what your local impact is during, when we talk about budget. But for FY '25, the impact of the full SU was $679,000 just in healthcare increases. Over the last five years, it's been over $2 million in healthcare increases. So that's pretty substantial, I mean, for just the 679, I mean, when you look at positions, you're roughly talking anywhere approximately, almost 10 positions that could fund that increase. Each position's a little bit different, but it's approximately 10 positions. So that will, I mean, is having a significant impact on all of our budgets and it definitely will impact Rutland Town as well. The other thing I want to talk about briefly before we get into here, and there's no handout, but FY '25 is the first year that Act 127 will be taking place. Act 127 spans from FY '25 to, well, the implementation period is FY '25 to FY '29, so five years. And after that, all of the protections and stuff go away after FY '29. What Act 127 did essentially was it applied different weighting measures to the ADM counts. So in our current finance model, we have what's called equalized pupils, which is, takes our ADM numbers. ADM is the average daily membership, which is a count that's done at the beginning of the school year in each school. And it just counts the number of kids that are enrolled in your, in your school, as well as any of your tuition out.
Can I ask a question about that, Louis?
Yep.
So preschoolers, just so I'm aware, they do not count as one, correct?
So they count as one in ADM. In equalized pupils, they count as .46.
Okay, and then those students on free and reduced lunch and students on IUPs, do they count more than one?
Not in the current model.
Okay.
So in the current model, so they take our ADM and they take a two-year average and then they apply some weighting to it, but not a lot of weighting. So for instance, the pre-K, any pre-K students, if you have 10 pre-K students, they're weighted at .46, so they would only count as 4.6 if you have 10 of them, 4.6 equalized pupils. And like I said, that's a two-year average. The new, the new Act 127 financials will be based on a more heavily weighted system. So it's going to take your average daily membership and then it's going to wait for pre-K, it's gonna wait for poverty, it's gonna wait for ELL, as well as other factors, including like what your density of the population is. And what that is going to do for, for most districts, it's going to have a net increase in your, it's now, now longer called equalized pupils, it's now called long-term weighted ADM or something like that. It's going to have a net increase for most people. And then it's going, the offset to that is it's going to lower the yield. For instance, we don't know exactly what the yield is going to be because we're, there's only modeling that the state is giving us and we won't know until the December 1st letter comes out from the Tax Commissioner. Last year, the yield was $15,479. And so they're estimating that based on the new weighting, it's gonna drop the yield to approximately like $9,900. But everybody else, everybody's new equalized pupil number is going to go up. The problem with Rutland Town is because of your low poverty numbers, and we've talked about this, this has been something that's been in the works for a number of years. Rutland Town is going to see an approximate decrease of about 18% in your, in your overall revenue that's coming in from the state. So it's, it's a combination of a decrease in your equalized pupils and the yield, those two factors combined. So it would, if it was all at once, it would result in an 18% increase in your tax rate. Because it's spread over five years and 18% is really too much of a burden on taxpayers, there is mechanisms in the law that if you follow certain guidelines, that the max that your tax rate could increase in any one given year is 5%. And that, that's pre-CLA, so that would be applied to your tax rate and then you apply the CLA and to get whatever your actual tax rate will be. The tax rate is at the town level where the, the 5% threshold is at the district level. In order to be eligible for that 5% cap, you need to keep your education spending per pupil under 10% increase. So that's just a target that you need to keep in mind. At the next meeting, we'll go into more details as, we should have a lot more information, including the Tax Commissioner's recommendation. We should have more information as to what the ADM number is and what that 10% threshold actually is as far as dollars go. We're not close to it at this point in this budget. There are a few things, large items that are still pending that we'll go into in a few minutes. But I just want, just information for you to have and we'll go, like I said, more details next month, but keep in the back of your mind as we're going through this process and as we are looking at what direction we want to go in, these are items that we need to consider. If you do increase your budget by more than the 10%, you have to do a review in front of the state to see whether you still qualify for the 5% cap. And that review will look in, look at what are the factors that are causing you to go above that 10%. So factors like adding things probably would not be a good factor, but if you had a significant decrease in pupils or you had an emergency repair that needed to happen, those are factors that might influence the board to say, okay, we'll keep that, that cap. If at any point during the five years, you lose that 5% threshold, then that 5% threshold goes away. So if like in year one, you lose that 5% threshold, then that would not apply for the other four years as well.
Wait, what do you mean, you lose it? I lost it there.
So it, like, for instance, if you go above that 10% in year one and the review board says, no, you don't qualify for the 5% threshold, you don't have that option anymore for years two, three, four, and five.
You don't get that safety.
You don't get that safety net goes away.
Oh.
So it's important to keep that safety for as long as possible. In the end, after the five years, this is all going to hit, so it's something we need to prepare for. And for, so there's some boards or some districts that are getting the advantage of this, where they're gonna see a lot higher weighted average ADM. And so their tax rate. they're going to see a lot higher weighted average ADM. And so their tax rate is either going to go down or they could add to their budget. And then there's those districts that are really disadvantaged by this, and are either need to make cuts to their budget or they're going to see a large increase in taxes. Now, the state says that the intention of this is not to, for those districts that are advantaged, the intent is not for them to take tax rate savings, it's to add to their budget to provide more supports. The idea behind that is that those ones that are advantaged are in high-poverty communities and they need to add more supports to be able to provide what their students need. So they don't really want to see budget decrease, or they don't want to see tax rate savings, they want to see those towns raise their budget, add more staffing, whatever it takes to provide more supports. In the districts that are disadvantaged, like Rutland Town, the intent would be for you to make preparations so that you can find efficiencies and maybe cut your budget so that you're not taking a 20% tax rate increase. But that in the end is going to be up to the board, up to the community, and see what the community is willing to support. So I think we'll need to start educating the community during town meetings. And I mean, as soon as we have real data that, based on the first year's yield and the first year's ADM and what that actual impact will be, then we can start providing more information to the communities. So we can kind of get a feeling as to, over the next four years, which direction should we be going. Definitely Rutland Town is the most disadvantaged in our SU. I'm not sure about the state as a total, but definitely in our SU, it's the largest impact.
At the school board conference.
We were running home school.
They mentioned that the Act 127, all the details aren't quite ironed out yet either. For instance, you know, there's that board that you're supposed to go before if you have a higher than 10% increase, but they didn't say how they're going to form this board or what is going to be on it.
They're still looking for volunteers. Like, I know they talked about it at the VASBO meeting, which is the business manager's monthly meeting, sort of like the, and they were looking for volunteers. And I know a few people spoke of like, so why would we want a volunteer to be on a board that's going to tell other business managers that yes or no, it's a hard decision to begin with. So I think that, yeah, it's going to be a tough job.
Yeah.
Up to this point, all we have is assumptions based on past data. We don't have any real data based on what numbers are going to be looking like. So all the numbers that I've said to you are just based on past data assumptions. Hopefully by next month, we can look at some real numbers.
And then ESAR is going away as well, as of September of next year, too. So that doesn't play as much in the local budget, but it affects our sum of the local budget and our SU assessment.
Yeah, but I think our SU is in a pretty good position. We've been very cautious this whole time over the last few years as to not create a financial cliff. Definitely ESAR has helped the last few years and allowed us to end with surpluses. But I think everything that we have been funding through ESAR, we have built into the budget over the years so that when the ESAR funds go away, we're not just having a financial cliff. So I know like there's one position that's currently being funded with ESAR at Rutland Town, and that position has been in the budget the last year or two. And we've just been having those savings. And the plan was to take that off ESAR this year, but because we have ESAR funds available, we continue to fund that with ESAR. So you'll have more additional savings this year. So I think we're in a good place on that front.
What position is that, Louis?
It's one of your support positions.
Okay.
Yep.
I wasn't aware.
Thank you for looking ahead.
Yep. So now into the actual budget. So right now, the budget you have in front of you, it's the first draft. Expense is up by $390,000.
Thank you, Aaron. Thank you, Sean.
Expenses up by $390,000, which is a 3.9% increase. Educational spending is up by $446,000, which is 4.7% increase. And the difference between education spending and expense is that education spending is the amount we have to raise in property taxes. So to get that, we take our total expense minus your local revenues. And so the big driver that's causing that difference in percentage is that last year, we had a $317,000 surplus that we applied as revenue to give back to the taxpayers. Last year, we ended with a surplus of $203,000, which we currently plan to give back to the taxpayers as revenue pending board discussion as to see if there's other ways we want to use that. But that, the difference between the 203 and the 317 is $114,000, which is causing that difference. That's being, that does have some offsets. As we look on page two of the budget, you can see those numbers that I'm talking about. That's the 317 is labeled prior year carryover. Offsetting that is some increases in interest income, as well as some tuition, which are also items that I've highlighted on the budget for changes. So all the items I'm going to go through are on page one, they're the summary of changes. So this budget includes a 16.4% increase in health insurance, which is a $98,000 increase for Rutland Town. There is a new position included in this budget, which is a kindergarten para that has an estimated compensation of $45,000. There's some highlighted items that are in the budget, which are pending items. And they're, at this time, they're mostly tuition items. So there's the pre-K tuition, there's vocational tuition, and then there's secondary tuition. At the time that this budget was created, we don't have, because it has such a large impact, we don't have solid numbers yet. We don't know what the tuition increases will be, nor do we have a full student count. We're still collecting that data off of invoices. So I will have that data for the next meeting. Obviously, Rutland City has the largest impact, and we've seen some pretty large increases the last two years, 14% two years ago and 10% last year. I haven't had discussions with the business manager, and he hopes that the increase is not going to be as much this year. So we'll see. We're still waiting for what their allowable tuition was, that's the state calculation that they do after the year is done. We don't know what their allowable was for last year. I'm hoping it's less than what their tuition is for this year, which may result in some refunds, as well as, and maybe we'll see, not so large of an increase in their tuition. So I will have more data on those for next meeting. The other two items that were pending were the SU assessment. Last week, the board did approve the SU budget. This had just been submitted to the packet before those were approved. Both of the general fund and the special ed fund were approximately a 4% increase. And that has a, approximately a $50,000 budget impact for Rutland Town. Seventh grade field trip is built into this budget, and that's approximately $20,000. There's an increase in officials' pay and athletic wages, that's $3,000. I increased the fuel budget. We have been underspending or overspending that budget line, as well as electricity, the last two years with the increase in fuel prices. We did get a better price this year that we're currently in. We're contracted at $280,000. So hoping that we can see a decrease in fuel and get a good contracted price for next year as well. I did shift the furniture line from planned operations, so you'll see that as a negative under planned operations to the instruction section. And there was a request to increase that line from $10,000 to $20,000. So you see the full increase in the instruction section of $20,000, and then $10,000 of the offset is under planned operations. We did see an increase in our SRO expense last year, which, so we're playing catch-up and increasing the budget by $20,000. As I mentioned a little bit earlier, we have an increase in tuition revenue due to, right now, I'm estimating four tuition students for next year. At next meeting, we will look at an announced tuition rate and approve that. So the rate I have built into this budget is based on our, based on our current rate, I believe. So next month, we'll look at, we'll look at that rate, and it won't have a large impact. But I think that's a conservative estimate. I think we actually have six tuition students right now, one who's graduating. So five, if you subtract that one. But just to be on the conservative side, I only estimate budgeted for four.
So is that in the revenue part that you mentioned?
So it's the first line on page two.
So.
$64,000.
Yeah, so it's different than the 32 on that sheet, right? The cover sheet, you said it was 32,000. Did we, I was just trying to follow that, make sure I was looking at the right thing.
Yeah, it's actually 47,000. I'm not sure where I got the 32. On the summary of change page, I may have had only three and then added another one in based on the discussion that I had. So, and didn't update the comment. So it is 47.5. Thank you. The surplus, we talked about that. We'll need to decide whether we want to use the full amount as revenue towards the budget, or whether we want to consider a separate article to put some of that away towards capital improvements. Let's see, here's, the healthy food programs, that's the program that Hillary Lambert's doing in your schools. She comes in and does like a harvest of the month. That, we have currently funding that through grant funds. We're going to keep that program for next year and fund it out of food service surplus. We were originally going to put that into the general fund. That's a contracted out service. But we did find additional, other funding that'll allow us to keep the program without having a budget impact. And then there's some small, smaller increases and decreases throughout the budget that just were not significant enough to worth mentioning in the summary of changes. Some other things that we've talked about that are not in the budget yet. So there's the bus for summer school, that's about 10K per bus. The lifetime sports, we don't really have a dollar amount, not sure what direction the board wants to go in on that. And then paving was brought as, as a, just a priority for planned operations.
Outback. The outback, basketball court and stuff outback.
Do you know how much that would cost?
It can't be done by the toyway department.
I'd have to circle back with Kelly about that. That's what we were hoping for. It just has never, never happened.
Make it happen.
You want to make it happen?
Huh?
Can you make it happen?
I'll talk to them.
Okay.
I don't have any cost estimates on that yet.
Kelly's five-year plan for our building plan is in here, in the shared drive. So he put back of school in the bus area, and he just said, oh, he did say cost estimate attached, but I don't see it there.
There's nothing. But I could try to get more information on that for the next meeting. So at a previous meeting, and just another piece of data, there was a question as to whether Rutland Town was ascending school or not. And so I said I would provide more information. So in the current year, Rutland Town is receiving approximately about $120,000 from the state. 100, yeah, I think it's 160,000.
So Louis, that's because a lot of people, the taxpayers will ask us, are we still considered a gold town? Like, how much money do we pay to the state and then how much comes back to our students? So can you explain that again?
So Rutland Town, yeah, used to be a gold town, which means that you collected more in taxes than you needed to support the school budget. So each year, you sent some of that tax dollars to Montpelier.
Correct.
I think, was it last, last year, I believe, was the first year that you were no longer considered. That's, I mean, that's, I don't know what the technical term is. I think it's ascending district. You were no longer sending money to Montpelier, you were actually receiving money from Montpelier. And this year, it's three payments of $38,000. So approximately 114,000, 116,000, something like that. Doesn't impact your budget at all, just a piece of data. So what that...
So that's what that other paper was that you put in the...
What's that?
That was that other document you...
Oh, did I include it? I wasn't...
I think so, yeah. I was, I've never seen this before, but...
Yeah, that's the report that goes to the treasurer. They know how much to send to the school district.
So how does it not impact our budget? Where does it go?
So whether you're ascending district or not, your tax rate...
Send me that filing.
Is set based on your spending times...
It's in the Google Drive.
Or divided by equalized pupils, the yield. That doesn't, so the grand list does not impact your tax rate. It just determines whether you're sending money to Montpelier or receiving money from Montpelier.
But where does that money go?
Which money?
The money that, the $38,927.
It's part of the education spending. So if your education spending is $10 million in this situation, there's some real numbers in here, but just using simple numbers, if you're receiving $1 million from the state and your education spending is $10 million, then $9 million of it would come directly from the treasurer. That's the money they're raising in property taxes. The other million is coming, is coming from, in essence, it's coming from a gold town that's raising too much in taxes. They're sending it to Montpelier, and then Montpelier is sending it to you.
Okay. I think I got it now. Thank you.
So those are all my highlights. I don't know if there's anything, Sarah, you'd like to add?
There is one thing I would like to discuss, but it's personnel, so an executive session.
Any questions?
Roughly, I don't have all the data. What's the...
Yes.
The hit to the tax bill?
I don't need you to bring it up.
4.7% increase.
So in, there's so many factors that determine your tax rate. So there's the CLA, there's the yield, and then there's equalized pupils that are outside of this. In a scenario where all those things were status quo from one year to the next, this current budget in front of you would result in a 4.7% increase in taxes. But we do know there's Act 127 that's going to change that. We know that there's, the CLA is going to change. We don't know if it's for the worse or the better. And then we know that the yield is going to change. I would anticipate that you're going to see a 5% increase in your tax rate because of that threshold that I had planned on that. I don't think there's any scenario that you're going to see less than a 5% increase. So any increase in your budget between up to that 10% max, you will see a 5% increase in your tax rate because of that, that ceiling, that 5% threshold. And I think we need to do everything that we can to stay under that 10% window, which will keep us at that 5%.
And if we are, if we're close, we have to kind of watch it as years go on so that when that 5% cap is gone, we don't jump up to 10% all of a sudden. So we have to be kind of cognizant of what we're doing.
I mean, you're sort of just kicking the can down the road because if you have the 18% decrease because of Act 127, and you have a 5%, let's say that's 23%, and then every year from now on, you have 5%. That 18% is still there. You're sort of just kicking it down the road so that you're not hitting taxpayers right now. The thought processes, over the next five years, you're trying to make decisions and moves that will either lower that 18% by finding efficiencies or preparing taxpayers that it's coming. percent by finding efficiencies, or preparing taxpayers that it's coming. So, I mean, that eighteen percent's not going away. It's just a delay so that you can make changes or communicate.
One question, I was angry at the healthcare. So, we're going to hit five, but if we, if we have a localized increase of eight, we're capped at five?
Yeah.
Okay. For how long?
For five years.
Who negotiates the...
Unless we go over ten.
Unless you go over ten, yeah.
Who came up?
So, I know, like, in one of my meetings, the VASW meetings, and they were talking about, if you're capped at five, people are going to spend nine point nine each year.
Yeah.
But, you do got to keep in mind that that nine point nine is not free money, and it's not going away. Down the road, five years from now, when that five percent ceiling goes away, all of that's going to catch up on you. So, if you're at nine point nine for the next five years, you're five percent over. I mean, that's another twenty-five percent.
Who negotiates the healthcare? I heard you mention that issue.
Yeah. A couple of years ago, the state took that away from local, local negotiations. And so, the state now negotiates that VSBA.
They're doing a very poor job, it looks like.
Well, it's not, it's not a negotiation. If you take a look at BHI spending over the last three fiscal years, it's down ten and a half, down eight, down eight point one, and our premium hits have gone up fifty-four. It's out of control. And it's insurance problem. It's not a negotiation problem. We shouldn't, a family plan shouldn't be thirty grand, and we're paying a pair of, what, twenty? I mean, that's something they got to fix in the next five years. They can claw back that eighteen. I mean, it's, Rutland City's tuition's going up. They have four hundred and ninety-nine people. That's sixteen percent increase in their healthcare. I mean, it's going to be an astronomical number for them.
So, the, VHI has said that one of the main drivers is prescription costs that are driving the increase. But, one of the main drivers for the constant, I think that this prescription is the last, at least in the last year or two. But, one of the, I think, these plans that we've gotten into, when we switch to these high deductible plans, they're just, they're a very generous benefit. So, for someone who has a family plan, and it comes with, say, an HRA of four thousand, forty-four hundred, depending on the type of employee, that's first dollar. So, as an employee, I can go out and have forty-four hundred dollars in medical expenses and not pay a penny. And then, after that forty-four hundred dollars, then I'm responsible for the next six hundred. And then, the insurance company pays a hundred percent of everything after that. So, my, in addition to my premium, my max expense out of pocket is six hundred dollars. So, if you have an employee, employees who are taking, there's a lot of drugs now on the market that are these name brands that go for three thousand, four thousand dollars a month. You're looking at twelve months a year. You're talking almost between thirty and fifty thousand dollars a year, and their max out of pocket is only six hundred dollars. And potentially less with, because the prescription has a max out of pocket, and then there's these copay cards, but, so...
Outside of the premium, though, right?
Outside of the premium.
I mean, the premiums are still high for, in some regards, right?
Yeah.
I mean...
Well, for a family plan, it's about six thousand dollars, yeah. But, we have no control over that. That's really out of our hands. We just have to pay the bill.
Can I give you some questions on the budget? Substitutes for nursing. The last two years, we spent over fifteen hundred. So, I was just curious if, why...
So, last year, there was actually a leave where she, the nurse was out for an extended period of time, I believe. That's not just a normal substitute. That's just not a normal...
But, the year before, it was still over two thousand, I think. I was looking back.
Yeah, I mean, that's just a, it's just a placeholder. We can increase that if you like.
And then, the fuel oil. I was just curious, I know that you said that we overspent it, and that's why you increased it, but why did you only increase it halfway between our budget and what we spent? Is there, do you see it going down?
So, last year, we, our contracted price was three sixty-five. This year, our contracted price is two eighty.
Okay.
So, it's a...
A little bit better.
Decreased about eighty-five cents. And, I mean, I do follow the fuel market on a daily basis.
I was just curious.
So, I mean, I'm hoping to be able to lock in at a, at least in the twos, so...
I'd agree. And then, the co-curricular transport, is that field trips and things?
Yes.
So, I was curious with the board. I know that we had talked about trying to increase field trip opportunities. And last year, we spent ten thousand. So, I didn't know how the board felt about increasing that line item a little bit, or keeping it the same.
So, I didn't realize we even had money in the budget for that.
Yeah, I think they get one a year, or something like that.
At a previous board meeting, we had itemized all the grades Sherry put together. Basically, it's one field trip a year, pay for busing, and then it needs, either needs to come out of their budget, or some donation.
So, I didn't know how you fall about that.
I don't remember what month it was, but...
No, I remember that.
Okay. It was last year.
I think it was in end of spring.
Okay.
So, you pay for one field trip a year?
Yeah, busing. The busing for it.
Interesting.
So, was it just, why was it higher? Do you remember?
Higher last year. I think increase in transportation, and that's been part of it. Even the athletic transportation, oftentimes, Mike would come to me, there's no bus drivers.
I believe the deposit for Ginger Cook might be in that actual...
Oh, okay.
And that was about five thousand dollars.
Okay. So, we actually probably spent less overall. Okay. I feel better about it then. Thank you. And then, my other questions are, I think personnel, so I'll save it for executive. Does anyone else have any questions regarding the budget?
Just curiosity, really. But, the increase in officials' pay, is that because of more games, or increasing the rate?
Mandate, right? It was mandated.
It's coming down from VPA. They set the rates. They're increasing the rates.
Got it.
Pair of coaches?
Yes. Just the middle school.
Just the middle, seven, eight.
Not very little.
That was one of the reasons, I'm guessing, yes.
What?
It's a thousand, it's a thousand dollars, but after taxes.
You get about seven fifty.
How long's it been there?
Only like two years, right? I think, two or three years?
Two or three years, yeah.
It was less. It was like five hundred or...
Or eight hundred for basketball, and, yeah. So, it's, you volunteer to do it. I mean, that's something that I would like to discuss with the board.
The goal is to relook at the co-curricular rates and come up with a great issue wide, because we do have a lot of inconsistencies across the issue, even within district, where, like in Corey Valley, you might have Proctor High School paying one rate, and West Rutland paying another rate. So, there was an attempt at that a couple of years ago, and it didn't work out, just because of budget constraints and grandfathering of employees, or what the new rates would be compared to what current rates are. But, so, I think the plan is to take another stab at that. Hopefully, after budgets are kind of sailing along a little smoothly, we can, it may not be until after budgets are passed, but it's something, it shouldn't have a significant impact on Rutland Town. It'll have a bigger impact on schools that have varsity and JV teams, but we are going to look at it.
I know one thing that we did talk about in the summertime as a hope and dream for the budget was fixing the fields. Because I know that you talked about the lacrosse field, the softball field, the stretchers, and, you know, I just, so, I just...
Do we, I didn't see, I didn't go line by line. Is there a specific athletic budget we have?
Yes, it's on five.
So, I mean, that's, I would just say, that's something that I did talk to Kelly and Chris about a little bit, is that if we were to do the upstairs, it would be great to do the asbestos, rip up the carpet, marmoleum, flooring, look at HVAC system, and do the, like, do it all. I know that's...
Instead of the upstairs?
This is like, no, this would be dream pie in the sky to get, just because if you're doing the upstairs, could we also do the asbestos abatement? Because if you do it, it's just a little piece, year by year by year by year. And then, we talked about two, and we've had, Chris's daughter, I believe, played on the athletic field and had a few comments. Some other fields are a lot better. So, he did share that. Sorry.
Throw that under the bus.
No, but there are comments, I mean, I've had relatives do it, that they're like, what the heck? Like, this field stinks. It's, we're a middle school.
But, kids get hurt on it, and so, it's a safety issue.
I think kids can get hurt on, I wouldn't say it's because of the field, though.
It might, I don't know. I think that we could take precautions to make it safer. I don't think it's just because of the field either. I mean, but, I know that when there, it's an uneven surface, it increases chance of injury. So...
Your softball field is not playable.
How many non-parental coaches do we have? Any?
Kelly, Treya is coaching girls, seventh grade basketball, and eighth grade basketball.
Amanda Carmichael did cross country?
Yep. Amanda McIntyre did cross country. Cory Pollack did soccer.
And lacrosse?
He does lacrosse as well. Oh, yep.
Colby does baseball.
Right. Colby does baseball, and Aaron Odette helps. So, we're fortunate to have people...
Players that are...
Yeah, that do it. But, I mean, I will say, other schools have tried to poach them to say, we pay double. Do you want to come coach down here instead? And they say, no, I want to teach, coach my, our kids.
How would we find out how much it is to shore up the fields? Who would we talk to?
There's money in the budget to do that now. I mean, there's, have somebody come in and rescreen the field with new topsoil.
Where's that money in the budget for that?
Under plant?
Seven thousand dollars in there. I used to get two. Don't spend it all in one place.
So, that would be under repair and maintenance, or grounds maintenance?
Well, I mean, there's grounds maintenance. That's mostly used for mowing.
Plowing. I'm not looking at it right now.
So, then, it would be under repair or maintenance services?
Yeah. But, there's the repairs line.
Repairs and plow?
We have a tractor, so it's...
From the town, can't pick up?
So, it might be something Kelly can do himself, just material.
One pocket to the next. You're moving money one pocket to the next, right? No. They're too big, I guess.
Could we, could we ask Kelly what he can do this year, and what he anticipates in order to maintain it, if it would increase what's in the budget for next time?
Yeah. So, I'm asking him just about...
Softball field and playing field, shoring them up. What it would take, what we can do this year, and if we need to increase the budget from ninety, from ninety-five thousand for repair and maintenance, to make sure that we don't go over for the other things that we need that money for.
Can I ask a question? I've been stuck on this co-curricular transport. So, you get one...
I can go back to the board meeting where, or if somebody knows what month it is, it should be in our shared drive.
No, I remember. It was one...
One bus.
Pay for one bus?
Yep, per grade level.
So, then, what happens if they want to do a second field trip?
Sometimes that, I don't know by memory, Abby. I'd have to look at the document that Sherry created, and it lays it all out for you. I don't have that at my fingertips right now, but I can get it.
I do recall reviewing that. And so, I think some of the field trips that had a cost to them outside the transportation, that it was parent paid, I believe, is what the thing is.
Yep, some of that is.
And I know in other schools, I mean, if they have a field trip budget as well, and so, if they want to do two, then the teachers usually look for grants, or donations, or something like that.
And they usually do put something in there when they send out a parent letter, something to the effect of, it'll be this much. If you are having trouble needing that, please let us know.
So, it was June thirteenth. Do you want me to share it with you, Abby, again?
No.
I was just looking it up, too. Thank you.
Okay. It's June thirteenth. I can share it with you. And it lists the cost of busing, the cost of the field trip, and then if it costs per student. I'll just share it with you, as I have it right here.
So, I think just timing-wise, we still have some more discussion to do about the budget and executive session anyway. So, is it okay if we move on for now?
Yeah.
All right. And did anyone have any questions on the financial reports for Louis? Okay.
I thought you looked just over there.
Great. So, Chris, thank you for joining us. We moved old business after finance, so we're going to start there. So, we're on to the second floor update. And I think that you have information for us, right, for all the soft costs and things?
You know, sorry, you have a question? And so, is there a Kelly, Trina, that to discuss the soft costs? Ed had shared that with, and I don't know if it was put in the drive. I can upload that in the drive for all of you right now. I don't know if Christine had it, and there are not.
She did not.
So, there's, you know, okay, so, give me two...
Sure.
Seconds on that, and so, sorry.
Thank you.
Ed said it wouldn't necessarily be a problem. One of the things that he wanted to make sure was, it suggested that if we were going to go out to bond, that we also work with Sarah, Kelly, so the board, and really identify any high needs, big ticket projects that we really should do, and then just, you know, do one big bond, and just give us all the costs. So, Sarah, do you want to kind of elaborate also on the conversation while I completely upload that doc?
Yeah, we just talked about, we, basically, what you just said, one of the things he talked about is what we talked about at the board, that everything's going up. So, the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost. It is an empty space just sitting there. He also talked about, he suggested that, you know, if we do do this, that, he agreed, if we have asbestos abatement, field, do all of that. He said, do it all at once. So, he did a similar project for an alternative school in, I forgot, but they did that. They did their fields. They kind of just did everything at the same time. So, then, we're not in five years saying, oh, we want to look at HVAC, or we want to do these two primary wings, or this wing. So, that was his suggestion. But, he unfortunately is not a Rutland Town taxpayer.
The document is in the drive now. It's listed as Rutland Town School Total Budget Estimate spreadsheet. I don't know, Tina, do you want me to share this on the screen, or do it?
If you could share it, that would be great.
You see that?
Yes. I have it here, too.
The numbers seem to be distorted.
The highs are so bad.
Like higher?
Looks like it says three point one.
I know someone.
The coin from the screen to something else now. I can't do it anymore.
Yeah. Chris, does this have that clerk of the works in there, too?
No, it does not.
It does not have the clerk of the works, no. And that's something which he suggested, and I know that Kelly had felt that maybe he could serve as clerk of works, but I personally recommend we hire someone else to do that work. Children's, Big Naxx is a liaison between our contractors and the board. Children's, Big Nax is a liaison between our contractors and the board.
And, um, when I spoke to someone at the conference that does that type of work, I believe, um, he charges one hundred ten dollars an hour and anticipated it would maybe be like twenty to thirty hours of work. So I don't know if we could add that in to it, this preliminary budget estimate. Do you know what that, are you doing your calculator there for me?
Um, I figured a three million dollar loan is going to cost, principal would be an end, would be about ninety-three thousand in year one, and interest would be a hundred and thirty-six thousand. So you're looking at roughly two hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year for a three million dollar loan.
So two point three percent hit to the budget for debt serving roughly? Ten million?
Yeah. So it's another, yeah, another two point three. Plus then that doesn't include the soft costs, right?
Well, this supposedly does.
Well, that's, that's not like an energy usage rate per year.
Yeah. So there's energy costs, there's cleaning, there's personnel, um, fuel, uh, even fuel, electricity.
And Ed did say, obviously, furniture and some fixtures, obviously, that's just a rough estimate. That number can be significantly lower or dependent upon our taste, it could also be significantly higher as well.
So this includes all of the co- added costs, the one-time added costs, the little cost that I was referring to is the ongoing.
This is just, right, this would be just to get it up and running, but this is, this is not include like the yearly or annual costs, operational costs.
And this also does not count the asbestos abatement or any of that either?
No, that's, that's the five-year, Kelly calls it the strategic plan. That's in the shared drive for everybody. So those are just some things that we talked about, um, you know, doing kind of section by section of room.
Well, we don't even have a bid on that or anything, right?
We had some estimated costs, but those were from a few years ago.
Tina, this is only for
It's just upstairs, right?
Yeah.
This is only for work related to the second floor.
Right.
Nothing else.
So, so you're estimating?
No, I'm estimating a four point six percent rate. Yeah, no, I, so I, I was just playing with the numbers and, uh, so actually the bond bank did a presentation, uh, at my last VASBO meeting, and rates are at around four point six percent, which is high for, for schools. Pre-inflation issue, this, uh, they were in the low twos. So that has a significant impact. So I, I just lowering it to a three percent interest rate, um, lowers the interest, I, what I tell you was a hundred thirty-six thousand the first year, this lowers, that lowers it to eighty-eight thousand. So it's about forty-eight thousand dollar increase, decrease in, in interest costs the first year. So it's, it's not a great time rate-wise to be
Right.
taking such a large bond, but.
But there's no, there's no
There's no good time.
Good time.
I've heard that for twenty-five years.
Yeah.
No good time.
Yeah.
Oh, three years ago.
Yeah, in hindsight.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So you anticipate this increasing our budget?
I mean, I would estimate between the bond and the other costs you're going to have to add to your budget. I mean, I would estimate roughly another three percent.
How much?
Three percent.
Eight.
And I think that's on the conservative side, so that's not adding a lot of staffing.
It pushes us right to that ten percent spot.
But, but this is for fiscal year twenty-six. This would not be for twenty-five?
The first bond payment would most likely not be in TAF by twenty-six.
And the nine percent, um, inflation rate, where, where did they get that from?
Just guesstimate. We pass it in March, they start. It's not going to be the same cost as today, so they're inflating it for the future.
That has to be a high though, right?
Yeah. I, I know inflation's coming down. They, they just actually reported today and it was a unchanged zero percent.
I have a good place in the cafeteria tables.
So there is the potential that maybe it'll go down.
It was on what, we've had inju- injuries, they're, they're wearing. We've had inju- I know, we've had injuries. They're a lot
Where?
to move the cafeteria tables. We had teachers and staff doing them yesterday.
It should be him doing. Kelly should be picking them up.
They are. He has walking pneumonia. So we had nobody to, here to do them, and we had, we can talk about this in executive session.
All right. So what are people's thoughts on, do you want to start with Colin?
I love it. Uh, I mean, this is what we asked for. This is the cost, if we want to do it. I mean, we got to talk about projections of students' use of the space, what we need, you know? From what I've heard, this is what we need. We're obviously capped out, and not that we're building this for preschool, but we had a nice preschool presentation pushing three-year-olds away.
We still have sixteen on the waitlist or so?
Yeah, I'd have to go back and look.
The ability to, to build a futuristic tech space, what we're looking at the next twenty years, it's not going to get any cheaper if we wait a year, if we wait five years. Again, I'm just one vote, but I, I think we got the cost we need. We should get the abatement stuff as well, and, and we present it to the population. With the, with the support of the superintendent, with the, with the principal, with the teachers, knowing where the trajectory of, of, you know, we're not going down in population, from what I can tell, and from what the, the metrics say, that this is the right move. Um, as well as updating our current facility that hasn't, it's been limped along, but let's, let's do it. It's two thousand twenty-three.
Tim?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm on board. Not too much to say, so long as it doesn't go up again. It was like, what, two point seven, two, I don't know, it seems like it just goes up. Started at two point one, right?
It will go up a little bit if we do a clerk of the works.
Oh, we a hundred percent need a clerk of the works, or it's going to be a disaster.
Yeah. We need someone that's focused on it.
I think we may even be a bit high, which is good, um, and we just got to present it to them, and ultimately, it's, it's the community's decision, but.
I'm for. Let's go. I mean, put it to the vote for the, you know, present it to the people, you know?
I've been wanting to do it for twenty-eight years. So, you know, it's like, like Colin said, it's, it's not going to get any cheaper. You know, we need to, it has never been out to the public to see what we can do and send it out to them and, and ask for their support. I mean, nothing is going down. Nothing is going down. The budgets are going to be up, all through. It's like, do what, but do we want to hold our school back to not be a better place? We can, we cannot do nothing, and our budget will go up crazy. So let, let's get this stuff done. Let's make this a better place, and let's do it.
I think that we've seen a lot of the needs. We're busting at the seams. We have staff members working in closets as our offices. Um, we have no, we have a long waiting list for preschool. Um, we have no space for, um, a fitness room, or, you know, when we were looking at that grant, or any, any empty space for any new potential, um, classroom instruction or whatnot. And we have that space up there that's just sitting there and not being utilized properly. So I agree. So next steps, um, we want to try to get this onto the ballot in March. Um, we need probably to do a community presentation of some sort. Just doing that in January at our budget meeting, does that make sense? Or should we do a separate one? Does anyone have any recommendations?
Well, we have, can we get the abatement stuff by then?
I think we would have that by next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, that was just, um, you know, I mean, uh, with, I'm drawing a blank on the architect's name, Chris.
Ed Clark?
Ed Clark, thank you. Um, that was just a comment he made, and we kind of agreed, like, if we're going to do it, let's, we don't want to go out to the public and be like, oh, thanks for this amazing upstairs. By the way, all of our younger kids that are still here needs this, 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 and this. So these numbers were, um, three, four years old. And as you know, when budgets usually get cut, it comes from maintenance. Jeff can tell you that. That's usually where things get cut from, so.
Though I think we have been trying to put a little bit more over time so that we could be working on some of these piecemeal, but it, we saw a lot, a few months ago, um, or maybe it was last year, but we, it, there's definitely savings in doing it all at once versus doing it piecemeal. Um, so it would be helpful in the long run, I think.
Uh, I mean, I would recommend you do it at your pre-town meeting, which is the end of January, or the middle, middle end of January.
What was the ballpark figure on?
I, we haven't even, I mean, these are like three, four-year-old numbers, and
This is a project that Kelly would do over the summer or something, or is this something that someone comes in to do?
Well, a company has to come in for asbestos. He unfortunately can't do that. Um,
I will, um, in the circle article that I write up, I will make a note that we are going forward with it so that people are aware, at least that read that Rutland Town Circle. And we can talk about a little bit more logistics next meeting of how to present it. And maybe get a, a more finalized estimate with the clerk of the works and the abatement information.
Mm-hmm.
We need an investor packet. We'll present.
Sounds good. All right. Um, property land discussion. Chris was working on that for us.
Yeah, so, uh, so I have reached out to a few appraisers. I heard back from one I currently working with, uh, they're out of Rutland. It's Renee Dumas. Uh, so I had sent over these specs. Uh, we're trying to schedule within a week to get evaluation of the land. Once we have the valuation, I will share that with the board, and then we can discuss that in December as well.
And the purpose of that is to find out what we might be able to sell it for, and then present that to, um, the public slash the Rutland Town Select Board, see if it would be something they would be interested in, and then using those proceeds to decrease the cost of this project. We can talk about that when we have more information. Thank you, Chris.
Sure.
All right. Lifetime sorts. I think that's Colin and Abby.
Yeah.
So, uh, Colin, would you like me to share the spreadsheets?
Yeah.
Or do you just want?
Yeah, I sent it up.
Ordered it, Chris.
All right, yeah, yeah, yeah. The updated one? You may or may not be able to
All right, Ed, that's in your folder zone. All right, I'll share that right now.
Um, so we did a survey. We got a hundred and seventy-seven responses, um, pretty much the first about forty-five seconds we sent it out, we had a hundred and sixty-three of those, a hundred and seventy-seven. So we tried like crazy to have teachers push it out, um, but that's the response level, and, um, but it was great feedback. Um, and, and the personal feedback I get from the community and everyone I talk to is this, we want the program. So with the data I had, we had, um, and coming up with the first year ideas of a ski program, a cross-country ski program, um, an ice skating, curling, georgiety program, and, and at-school kind of leaning on our, our rec and gym teacher program. And the demographics we have, we have, um, fifty slots for, we had a hundred and thirty-six students, um, that want to go skiing. And of that, we have fifty slots. Um, we have about seventy-four that need everything from passes to lessons to, um, equipment. Uh, we only have fifty slots for that this year. After that, so that leaves, we had seventy-four kids that don't have passes, fifty that we put in that program is a hundred and twenty-nine dollars. That encompasses passes for the year, rentals, and, uh, instruction from PIKO and their professional instruction. Um, we have sixty-two kids that don't need passes. So putting all the numbers together and, um, so line one is fifty kids, one hundred and twenty-nine. So from there, we have to piece together, okay, if we're going to have other kids go that aren't part of that fifty, and that's the max we're at this year. Um, we have twenty-four students that if we were allowed to ski, would need passes, and twenty-five kids that would need rentals. Those are the direct numbers for a season pass, uh, for a child's season pass at, um, twenty-four students at a hundred and thirty-four, as well as the rentals that they have all year. That's where the top half of that sheet is. And then we have sixty-two kids that don't need passes, don't need equipment. And I would lean on the school's expertise of whether they need chaperones or not. Not all of them do. A lot of them are involved in the ski program to begin with. We had over thirty-six parents said that they could volunteer to ski and help teach if necessary. Um, with the numbers that we're generating to bring to PIKO, he, he, they, um, would give vouchers for those parents to ski, those teachers to ski for free as part of the package. So the total cost for those hundred and thirty-six students is thirteen thousand eight ninety-one, or roughly a hundred and two per student, although factoring in, we have a hand, more than a handful of kids that don't need anything. That with busing restrictions and kind of this all, kind of how I walk down the line, um, georgiety at, at five dollars a student per day per six classes. I was told sixty-five kids could fit in a bus relatively easily-ish. So that's where my number is coming from, sixty-five going to georgiety, sixty-five going to mountaintop, um, at
Excuse me.
And then eighty-seven numbers a bit high to, to stay at Rutland Town and do various activities here. Although I factored in the preschool, which I was also alerted, perhaps we shouldn't be involving them in this kind of program, since some of them still take naps. I didn't realize. But, um, so I pulled that out, so that, that eighty-seven number comes down by, me and Sarah did the other day, twenty-eight
Yeah.
or so, um, at a zero cost. So so the three, three hundred and twenty-five students you ever take outside of pre-K to do this kind of program with sixty-five, basically sixty-five going to georgiety, sixty-five going to mountaintop, and the remainder heading up to PIKO, which would involve two buses, georgiety would be one bus, mountaintop would be one bus. Those are the prices we got from Getcha or Betcha. All in cost of twenty-two thousand six thirty-one for a six-week program of this nature.
Excuse me.
With a, it corresponds to the survey results we got to break down the numbers this way. The real difficult issue is, we have fifty slots, we have seventy-five kids, um, so we're going to rely on the committee as well as PIKO's input as far as what grade levels, and how should we target those fifty students that get the whole package? Keeping in mind, we do have some parents that are going to be involved, that have professional instruction experience that can take on, um, the other twenty-four. Um, and so what the committee's idea would be, uh, probably leaning on an older age group with a parent or, or that nature, someone who can instruct versus the, the ones, the twos, the threes, first, second, and third graders that would need more of that PIKO professional experience. But I kind of wanted to put the budget together. I'd put a variance in there. I'd say twenty-five thousand. As a first-year, six-week program involving the entire school. And, and we could interchange the, I think, you know, in my professional or lack of professional opinion, that the Alpine skiers should be dedicated to the six-week program going there, but potentially the other groups could be rotating through ice skating and cross-country skiing or snowshoeing, so it wouldn't be just going to the ice rink every week. But again, we're going to be mixing up the activities there to all ice activity, not just ice skating with curling and other things. So I know all the parental support we've gotten, all the teacher sports, um, jumped in on a lot of these committees. Everyone's excited. Understanding too, there'll probably be some bumps in the road, leaning on Sarah and the team to do the, the, um, scheduling. Um, but everyone's extremely excited about this. Um, and at the end of the day, it's not a ton of money. And I think it's, it'll have a pretty big impact on the, the community as well as the school community and getting parents involved, um, and getting kids that are ten minutes away from the outdoors to actually explore the outdoors and, and do some of the activities that sadly enough Rutland doesn't do, even though we're right here packed in the, the Alpine, um, mountains. So, uh, it's something I grew up with, and since it's from experience, that it was, it was great. So I'd love to give that opportunity to all of our children. So I'd love to give that opportunity to all of our children. Pause.
How would we pay for it this year?
Well, you said half from you.
I decline.
I mean, I had heard, and again, I substantiated the funding issue, but potentially Esser is because it's, it seems to fit the bill for me and/or we have a surplus that we're sitting there talking about over 202. So that's where I would, if Esser's not a possibility, although if it's not taking it at the surplus.
So the surplus is committed, so it's, the only two options for the surplus is either giving it back to the taxpayers or asking the taxpayers to spend it on an art, as a separate article on the ballot. As far as Esser, the schools were given some enrichment funds, not that, they were given $12,000. I'd have to look to see what Rottentown has spent so far. There may be another round of enrichment funds coming out, but that, we have not nailed that down yet.
Bless you. And we've already spent a good chunk of.
Um, I didn't think it was, was it that much? I have it written down somewhere.
Yeah.
$12,000 is what was allocated, yes.
Per school.
Per school.
Yeah, we used a couple thousand for the field trip to Proctor.
I'd have to look and see. I know Sherri's been sending me a whole bunch of requests, so.
And is that all coming out of enrichment?
It hasn't all come out of enrichment.
Okay, I have in my board report what we spent on Esser.
Looking at budget and looking at what we can fund now. Could we break, look at the grade level of those 75 kids? Could we fund, like, let's say, eighth graders? We have, we have PIKO committed to us. Okay, if we.
Pardon? We haven't committed anything, but.
Well, we have PIKO, we have spots.
Yes, yes, yes.
Like saved for us. Like, you know what I'm saying? Could we budget, could we foot the bill for those 50 spots? Have send eighth grade and seventh grade? So, because, and then build the program on there for like next year. Let's, let's say we put it in our budget for next year. Those seventh and eighth, those seventh graders who already did PIKO don't get to do it next year because they've already had that experience. They have to do something. And then the people who are left, the seventh graders who are left behind does the school aspect of it. Do you know what I'm saying?
Right, yeah. The funding issue is different than, I understand what you're saying, yes.
So if we like started little by little, I, I would be for gung ho. But if we don't have the funding, could we do a slice of it? Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, oh, we, yeah.
I would rather do something than nothing.
Yes.
What was your take on the teachers' take on it?
I think the teachers are excited. I think it's a little bit of a, it's like concept, it's gonna be bumpy because they're, like if kids are staying back here, preschool, they need to have lunch, they need to have further contract, they need to have a prep period, a special coverage. And then if we have things running here, how are those teachers getting breaks? How are kids supervised at recess? It's just, you know, I would like it to be like a stipend position that somebody help, you know, organize all of this. Because it's a lot to organize for 350 some of our kids. It's like this quickly especially too.
You mean like a teacher to?
Yeah, to see if a teacher would be willing to, I can think of a couple that may be interested, but just organize it. And I think we have parents that have offered to help too, which is great.
Is there any, is there any way, is there any right way to be able to pilot this out besides all-in or?
I'm not sure. I mean, I think Colin did a great job of like, we have parents that are willing. We have kids that are excited, teachers that are excited, but I think the first question is just money.
Well, the other question is too, like, all those parents that are willing, that's great. But if they're gonna be alone with our school staff, they all have to be now be fingerprinted, right?
We do have a second read for volunteer chaperone policy tonight. But currently, yes.
I'll also throw this out just as a caution, like, I don't know what you're planning on doing, but if my recommendation as the business manager would be that not have staff participate in the skiing and the skating. It just is, it is a high-risk sport. They're on work time. If they do get injured, it would be a workman's comp, so. But it's your decision on how you want to proceed, but I just have to give that recommendation, so.
Well, that.
So I can't go sledding with the kids?
I go play at recess every. I have to say that that defeats the purpose, one of the big purposes of the program is to build that community, build that, like see teachers in a different light. So if you're gonna make the teachers sit in the chalet at PIKO, that's, you know, like, they want to, kids want to see teachers do something that they're not good at. You know, like, I'm telling you right now, I, at Rutland Middle School, we got the best when the teachers were out there curling with them or on the PIKO for the first time by the, you know, like. I'm, I, Colin knows this, I'm 100% for this, but that's, I would like to see it funded. But I would also, I would rat, if we're not gonna fund it this year, can we fund portion of it and work it in little by little each year?
I'll also throw, this is done in other schools in RSU and, I mean, there is a parent cost in the other schools. So like I know Polteny does it, I participate, and I, I've helped chaperone it. I think this year the parents are paying $75, so it's subsidized by the school with grants and donations. But there is a parent cost to it. They've done it both ways. They've done where, some years where they've done the whole school participates in different activities, where they do, they've done bowling, ice skating, cooking, skiing. And then there's been years where that hasn't worked out and they've done just the ski program and those kids have left for skiing. But school day continues as normal. Wells does it, but they do it a little differently. They actually just, they have a sole run by parents, so they, they dismiss the whole school and then the kids go off with a parent-led group to, I think Bromley, but I'm not positive. And then Middletown has done, it's similar, but it's a whole school thing. They're a lot smaller, only 60 kids. So they've done like the ski program and skating, but none of it's paid by the school budget.
How much money can you give me? Let's start there. We can get the rest. How much can we come up with? Because.
This year.
This year, right now. And a perfect, and I get what you're saying, let's do something, but a perfect, a perfect world is, especially for incorporating skiing, is that first, second, third graders getting the professional instruction. That way, when they're a year older, they're off skiing with friends and parents and teachers. I understand the insurance issues, but instead of waiting till you're in eighth grade to learn, like you learn first and second, and then you're off with chaperones, and that's the community spirit. And also incorporating all the activities, so if you decide not to ski, you're not stuck at the school. And as fun.
It's not a punishment that you don't want to see.
Yeah, or, and it's, it's a different experience to be at a rink, to be at a mountain, to be at a different site, snowshoeing than it is in the backyard. I mean, that's not, you're not gonna get rubbed up for that. They do that every day. So if we can commit a dollar amount, I don't know where it's coming from, but have you guys find it, someone tell me what it is, we can make it up with the community. Every parent's like, how much do we have to pay? So if we can commit some funds, I can get the rest of it.
Can we have a surplus?
Well.
Louis just said we can't use the surplus.
We can put the surplus in some capital improvement fund.
You can put an article on the ballot to do that, yes.
To do that, or give it back to taxpayers by having it.
As a revenue.
Yeah. Our budget for next year. But would you be willing to use some of the Esser funds from your?
Yeah, there is, I mean, I would have to ask you, Louis, to see what we have left for enrichment funds.
Would we know that today? Would you be able to figure that out or not?
Um, I mean, I could, I, I think there's a pretty good chance that we're gonna be doing another round. I mean, if you wanted to commit 12, 15,000.
February to early March. And do we have a timeframe in?
I mean, you gotta, you gotta have temperatures, so like the preliminary was the second January, second Thursday in January start running up to President's Week, whatever that holiday is.
How many weeks is this?
Six.
Oh, maybe if we cut it to five, would that help?
It's the same cost. It's the same, it's the same cost. It's a six-week program that PIKO runs.
Well, I mean, it would, it would reduce, it would reduce everything. I mean, PIKO's gonna be the same, so that's.
Yeah, it's less busing, but the PIKO cost would be the same.
Yeah, and then the rest of the buses, I mean, it would come down 3, 4,000. And really, we have to commit, but we need to have waivers, we need to have everything in by. Yeah, so, I mean, we can, we can get some more financial information and.
For, just for, I, for PIKO. PIKO's all waivers for these school programs have to be in by the 22nd of December. Nothing else, like you don't have to have like your Giorgetti and all that.
So that, so we might be able to use, you said, 10 to 15,000 in Esser funds, so we could commit to this? Is that what you think?
Guessimate.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I have no problem waiting till, when's our next board meeting?
December, December tenth or.
So I have a firm number that between Sarah and him that you guys can give me, and I'll get the rest. But I don't want to vote on like between 10 and 15.
I mean, if those are due by the 22nd, I think you need this.
I, I think we need to decide tonight.
The next board meeting is kind of late to start sending it, because parents aren't gonna.
Although, like I said, the skiing parents, we had all of our surveys back within 15 minutes of sending the thing out. They're ready.
It's all online, so you can send it out.
Yeah, I did it for my.
I did it for, for my kid too. Takes two, two seconds.
But if we're, if we're asking them to contribute money towards it, then it might be nicer to have a little bit extra time.
Are you asking parents to contribute money towards their kid going, or are you asking them if they, if they as a parent want to go?
Parents, so there's no parental cost unless we, unless, I mean, if they need to rent stuff and do that, that's all on them.
Well, it's just to supplement what we are willing to fund, right? So we have Esser for 10 to 15,000 that we can mark towards it, which is a good portion of it. If we decrease it from six days to five days, everyone still gets a good taste of it. It saves a few thousand. And then, so you think it would save 3,000 or 4,000, so then that would.
Yeah, I mean, it's a day off the busing, it's.
So that would bring it down, and it would, a little bit less time off from school, which I think is good too. So then that would be 18,000-ish, 18,500 or something like that. If we can, so then there's really only about 4,000 or 5,000 that's unaccounted for if we use 15,000 in Esser. And at least this year, we probably would be able to cover it with the budget, I think, with our history. But the problem going forward is putting it into the budget too. And you said at some of the schools, parents pay into the program?
None of the schools that are currently participating have a budget, have a budget impact.
At all.
Yeah.
Well, Colin, you're not asking parents to pay for their child to.
I'm asking them to donate to the program, not for their kid.
So you are going to.
If we, if we don't have all the money, yeah, I'll get the rest of it.
I think, I think we should consider that because it, I mean, we just spent a lot of time talking about how in six years we're going to have this huge impact from Act 127. And adding to the budget plus this, the second floor and everything else, we're only adding, adding, adding. It's gonna be really hard to pull it back. So I think if we get them used to donating to the program to help offset, offset costs for everybody, that would be wise. Maybe we could partially fund it at least for next year or try to work it in, but. That's kind of what I'm thinking.
So, so I guess devil's advocate a little bit on this is like, so you're asking, who are you asking to donate? Just the parents that have skiers, because we have a zero line item for the 87 kids that are just hanging out at Rottentown. Yeah, so it's like, hey, you want to donate, so like, yeah.
My kid skis or not, I'm gonna give money. I'm asking the community, I'm not gonna say, hey, your kid's doing skiing, so let's put it up. Although, most of the parents I'm talking to, like, how much do I have to pay? It was the first thing out of their mouth, not, oh, this is great, we're doing it, like, what do I have to pay? I'll do it. So I have a good feeling of those, but the rest, you know, I'm not giving it for my kid, I'm giving it for the program. For the kid that isn't my kid, that I can take up the mountain anytime I want. And that's, I want to get away from like, okay, you sign up, you know, there's the free kid, you get to stay at the school. It's like, no, I'm putting it in, use it where it needs to go. That's why we're doing lifetime support. That's why I want this to go, not, you know, I can pull my kid out of school if I want. Not that I'm gonna, Sarah, but, and go skiing, but I want it to be everybody who needs it.
And that reminds me of something, you were saying about, you know, for the kids that, you know, really have never been on skis because their family can't afford it, if we do add a cost to it, it's not gonna help those kids.
Well, that's what, that's what I was like, if we're gonna add a cost to it, then that just defeats our purpose. But if we are. Yeah. Because that goes back to my whole field trip thing, like, you know, it's just.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look into that.
No, no, just in general, like what I've talked about in the past of like, I worry about our demographics changing and parents saying, well, we'll just do the free one, you know what I'm saying? Even though I would, some parents might love their kid to go, but they can't contribute. So we'll just fill it out and be the safe bet and stay at school. You know what I'm saying? Like, I want to make sure people get the opportunity and it not be because of cost. But I understand what you're saying, so I think, I don't think you're saying like if you want to go to Giorgetti, or not Giorgetti, but PIKO, you have to pay.
You tell me, tell me how much Esser funds you're gonna give me, and I'll tell, I'll get the rest from the parents. Say, hey, this is what the program costs. We need 5,000 bucks. How much do you want to give me? Not, how much you want to give me for your kid?
Yeah, I know what you're. I, I, I do, I understand what you're saying. No, I get it, so I'm.
And then pre-budget, I'll go through that next year without having to wrap it up. That's all I really want to do.
Be grateful you could fundraise for this in some way, not, yeah. I, I think, I think we could, if we were able to earmark 15,000 from Esser and we decrease it a day to five days.
I don't know if that's gonna save money, aside from busing though, right?
It will for your other things.
The cost for the cross-country, the cost, it'll save a day. Bus, those two buses, the bus for PIKO, so three buses, a day of buses, and the cost for the ice skating and the cost for the.
And then, there's 75 kids back here at the school, right?
87, that's, oh, wait, well.
87 including pre-K.
We're taking those pre-K.
So I think that's something too, just logistically, again, to make sure that teachers have their prep time, what ages and grades. So sorry, what are we gonna do with them? Who's doing what with them that are staying back here?
Well, the good thing was is that you had Keith Snyder, Keith Schneider, who was on board of.
Right, but that's one person with 90 kids.
Well, I understand you would have.
87.
He can do it.
He can absolutely, he absolutely can.
Well, it's, it sounds like the preschool teachers wouldn't be going, so.
Right, and but they still need prep time and, you know.
But this is only a half a day, so.
I can help you with that. You and I can sit down and I can help you with, if you, like, seriously, like if you want to sit down and come up with a, just a mock schedule of what it could look like.
So if you have parent volunteer, like the 50 kids, I mean, you have parent volunteers that are on the bus. I know like with Polteny, I mean, they only send one staff member and then they have parent volunteers. Because once you get to the mountain, PIKO takes over for those 50 kids. So it's really just, it's really just getting them there, helping them get off the bus and into the, into the lodge to get their stuff on and.
No, I have firsthand experience with this and that, that I'm not, that, and all of, because Colin, I talked about, the other thing is making sure, snow clothes, socks, you know, it's one thing to have recess for a half hour, but to be up at the mountain, you know, and we'll work with our staff to make sure that we can provide what they need there. It's more of the 90 students here and what that looks like to make sure that teachers. It's more of the ninety students here, um, and what that looks like, to make sure that teachers have prep time, they have activities set up. And Keith is great. He's, and I'm, I'm not concerned, it's just approaching quickly, and that's why I was thinking of having a stipend position of somebody that could help organize all this, because we need to do it quickly.
One quick question before I use the restroom. I did see on the survey about, like, are you picking your kids up there? Is that, is that even possible?
Well, it, it, yes, it can be. Um, just one of the things is that in part of this budget is a lot of kids have skis. So that's another thing, logistically, like, are parents that are chaperoning, are they gonna meet up there with ski equipment? Because ski equipment can take up a lot of space on the bus. Too.
Got it. How's it like when middle school has a soccer game, you gotta send a note every week, you got all that for stuff?
And that's all that it would be. You can just say, um, excuse me, we had parents that emailed that said, for all away games, I'm gonna be taking my kid home. So they would say for all PICO or mountaintop or whatever trips, I'm gonna take my kid home, and that's.
And that parent has to be there, or that parent can just come pick them up an hour after?
The parent would have to be there.
You'd tell you'd have to have eyes on, so you'd have to actually see the parent with the child.
Correct.
About parent or odd parent?
What's that?
About parent or odd parent?
A parent. So we've had parents that, like, uh, will say, um, their Uncle John or my friend so-and-so is picking up, or will stay with whoever. We just need a note from a parent.
And it was about a hundred and three of the hundred and thirty-six that said they wanted their kid to stay there after, and they could provide their own ride home. Because again, to get the buses, we gotta get the buses back here at two forty?
So we would just need.
And the mountain closes at four fifteen.
Right, so we would just need a note.
And they would have to be there by the time.
They would have to be there by the time the bus leaves.
Again, we're gonna have thirty-five parents up there, so.
Right, to say, I leave my child with so-and-so. So I've done this before, too, with my own kid, and I said, I'm gonna take my niece and my kid and my nephew, and they're gonna come with me. And then everybody else.
They have to be a relative?
Yeah, you have to be there.
No, do you have to be a relative?
No.
All right. Yeah, so we're gonna have like. And I think that this rental number is this year, that's gonna go down. I mean, there's gonna be a community of this kid's coming up, okay, good, I have boots, I have skis. We don't need to drop a hundred and seventy dollars on a season rental for him. I can outfit five kids myself.
These are the kinks that everybody went down, that's all.
And it's gonna be messy, like, the first year. Like, it's going to be. Right?
Have you had conversations with Don or the bus company yet, just to make sure that they can support this with the buses that you have? Because, I mean, if you're going all these different directions, I mean, you only have so many buses and so many drivers. And then you still need to get those buses back here so that they can bring kids home that need transportation, so, um, it does.
If anybody out there that's listening wants to get their license through Retschel, please contact them, three eight eight, thirty-five hundred. No, three seven eight hundred.
Not sure what time the PICO program.
Also, no, that's where, the whole goal is, like, that's why so many parents are like, I'll provide alternative, because we know we gotta get the buses back here at two forty. The mountain closes at four fifteen, so.
And I'm sure the other schools, like, at my daughter's school, there were some parents with a van that were like, I'll follow the bus up there. I'll, you know, help the kids get on the bus, and I'll put ski equipment of those kids, you know, in my van, and I'll meet you up at PICO type thing.
Yeah, and I think for scheduling, we're very fortunate to be, a bus probably takes eight minutes to get up there, so at least we can get it back here quickly where in Orwell or they're hours to the mountain.
Right.
Yeah, a lot longer.
It's a lot.
We can compress the time the kids are out of school. While not at risk the public transportation.
Like to try to make a decision, so. Just go around and say what you'd like to do. Sorry, did you just?
What's that?
Uh, making a decision, what would you like to do about this going, uh, for this year and going forward?
Okay, you can go ahead with it.
For this year? And then put in the budget, see if they'll pull them out?
Let's go, let's do it.
Yeah.
Um, I, it sounds like there are some things that still need to be worked out, but I think we should proceed forward and then, um, just finalize plans and make sure that the buses are okay, um, for doing this, and that I would also like to, um, say that we could support a stipended, um, position for a few hours. I think that would be probably what it would, right?
Yeah, I don't know what that, I just think, I mean, there's a lot of work, and I mean, I don't have the time to, this is, this will be a ton of work initially.
Talking to the other schools and figuring out what they do with their teachers.
Yeah, so I just think, um, if there's a committee, I can ask somebody, how do I go about a stipend?
I think that would be part of the, I don't know. You mean this committee?
Yeah, there's like a lifetime sports committee.
Yes, why don't we meet?
Okay.
All right, let's proceed forward and final numbers, I guess, next time.
Yeah. And the goal will be to, out of the committee, e- each off-site will have a parent liaison, like, heading up that. So each, each group will have, like, there's gonna be a handful of parent volunteers for all of these groups, but one of the parents can be our point person to coordinate the parental, the riding, the ride-sharing, the equipment, I mean, thinking specific to skiing, but all the sites. Because we have some, each, each, each place has a dedicated, a lot of parental group, but we'll put one person in charge to communicate with, helping the kids off the bus and that side of the group to ease any, all the teachers and the people who are going, whether they're experienced or not, so they're not overwhelmed when they hit the mountain, hit an ice rink, they have parental person who knows what's going on, that can thrust the kids into the activities.
So just to be clear, I, I think I would need a motion then.
I'll make a motion to move forward.
Um, five or six days?
Um, let's go.
Do five, that's fine. Give me anything.
Colin said six. Oh, my goodness. Um, I would say five for this time, just because of the money. But then we can increase it to six, you know. Let's look at the budget for potentially.
May work out, I think we get blacked out of PICO.
You get blacked out.
The week before.
The twenty.
Of my six weeks.
The sixteenth, the fifteenth and the twenty-second are blackout dates. One, we are on vacation for, one, we are not. So whatever.
We're on vacation on the twenty-second.
So.
As President's Week. All right. So, that's fine. We're fine.
So then to add in that amount to the budget for next time as well?
Yeah.
I put a note to put twenty-five.
Twenty-five, even though we are decreasing it by the day, so it should be less?
For next year, though?
For next, well, I don't know. I guess it doesn't hurt.
And I think you were at twenty-two.
Twenty-two, nine, yeah.
So considering increases and.
Okay, that sounds good. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you, Abby.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for your work on it. But we'll get final numbers next time, just to have that information. Um, I'm gonna call a five-minute reset, because it sounds like we need it. All right, welcome back, eight oh, eight and a half PM. And now we're on to the director's orders. I'll need a motion.
Make a motion to approve?
Thank you, Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Um, approval of the minutes from October tenth. Any discussion? I found a few, um, just clerical errors, so I'll hand this to Louis to bring back. But I also wanted to make a note on page nine. Um, it said under the Fizz plant at the bottom, that, um, the note Tina confirmed with Sarah that the partisan that they were waiting for, and this will be completed by the end of October. Just wanted to make a note that that was for the front door to be accessible, so it should be its own separate bullet point. Because it wasn't mentioned at all in that section. So just wanted to make it clear on the minutes what that was for. And was that done, Sarah? Awesome.
Yep, there is, it's, one of the buttons isn't working on the outside, but yeah, it's pretty much done.
And that, it should be fixed soon?
Yeah, Kelly was just working on it today. We've been a little short-staffed.
Yeah, okay, great. So I need a motion to approve the minutes with the clerical changes and that one little nope?
Like, can I motion to approve those?
Thank you, Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Superintendent's report.
Thanks, Tina. I'll be brief. So a long way to go, you have an executive session as well, so I'm not gonna take too much of your time. Uh, just a few items to highlight. Obviously, this is the time where Louis, myself, and Sarah are really working on budgeting and town meeting prep. So we are, between now and, uh, the first year, we've really started kind of hammering that home. We'll have more updates in December with our town meeting. I would ask that in your superintendent's report, there are open positions, just to double-check, uh, to make sure that they are accurate in terms of who is, uh, whose seat might be open this year and for the length, uh, in terms of, you know, years of term, a year, two or three years. Uh, so just double-check that as well.
Chris, I.
In December.
I was gonna say, I think Tim's is only a two-year term.
Okay, so just, uh, just go, just, uh, send me and Christine an email with that, and then we'll update that. So thank you. So strategic plan, we will have an update in December. Uh, that'll be for the GRCSU board, but also bring that to the local board as well. Just updates on what we're doing across the SU. Sarah, I know, has been discussing just the things that she has been doing here in the school, so we can highlight some of those things as well. And the last thing I just want to talk about is timely. In Act, uh, in two thousand twenty-one, Vermont General Assembly passed, uh, what's called Act Seventy-Two. One of the main components of this was that they required all schools to undergo what was a facility assessment. And so this past month, we received these drafts of these facility assessments, uh, for each of our schools and within our SU. Myself and Louis, uh, will be, uh, meeting with, you know, Sarah and Kelly, we were supposed to speak last week, but, uh, just we were, we're able to do it. We're at meetings this week to review. We are reviewing the draft of this, uh, assessment. I do believe the initial ten-year, uh, they're putting the number right around four million dollars. Work that needs to be done. That's also just, you know, things that are aging out, uh, like boiler systems, just, you know, other, you know, components as well. But, you know, so what we're asking Sarah and Kelly to do is take a look at it, make sure that, uh, this is a hundred percent correct. Uh, if there are any major errors, we need to send that back to the state to correct it. And then in January, we will receive a follow-up report. Once we have a follow-up report, we will share that with the board. And then we will then have to develop a five-year capital improvement plan, not a strategic plan, as like Kelly likes to call it. It's a five-year capital improvement plan that, you know, we are going to have to develop, uh, around this, so. So we'll have more information on that as well, but, uh, you may hear about these facility assessments, but, uh, reports. I think that we have seen them, we are working with them, and we are sending, uh, some reports back for revisions. And once we have the cleaned-up versions, we will share those with the board for review. Okay. And last, uh, last thing, I do want to thank Colin and Tina for attending the VSA, VSBA Fall Conference in Lake Maury. So this is one of my meetings. Uh, past four years, I've been attending this. I think, I thought this was the best conference of the past four. Uh, a lot of great workshops, great information, and I have included some of that information in our report, and I'm sure Tina and Colin can share as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
And I apologize for not being there in person tonight. I thought it was up at UVM for the outstanding educator ceremony tonight, so.
I'm glad you were able to attend that. That's great. All right, Sarah, principal's report?
Sure. Um, uh, we had our high school fair, um, in the cafeteria on November first, thanks to Kate Manavell for, um, setting that up. It wasn't as, um, highly attended as it has been in the past. I know that all, we also had the board social that night as well. Uh, we had parent-teacher conferences last week. We're, um, looking to reschedule, hopefully, um, I'm not sure a date yet for the November ninth that was due to the, um, icy roads. We have about eighty conferences that were scheduled for that day, so we have quite a few to make up. Um, getting to the why, uh, Mr. Lamar and Ms. Manavell attended with a group of students, um, with Corey Valley, uh, Corey Valley and some other schools. So the next, uh, plan is to do a data analysis retreat, community dialogue night, action and celebration. SRO, Angie led our all-school evacuation on November twentieth. Uh, we have, as we mentioned at the last, uh, board meeting, we've had, we have seen an increase in our hazing harassment and bullying, specifically within our middle schools. Um, and I would say specifically, uh, probably a couple of weeks ago, I would say, with harassment. Um, and I think we feel that, um, students just are not educated on this policy and specifically, so they may say something as a joke. But if it's repeated happening over time, and if it's in one of those protected classes, that's a definition. So thanks to Mike, um, who has reached out to some other schools and resources, um, and is using School Connect. And I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about it, Mike, just kind of what you're doing with our middle school?
Yeah, definitely. So we've gone around, uh, myself, Liz Yato, um, Ashley Arnold, Officer Angie, we've gone around to different TAs and talked to the kids. We use School Connect as a resource. Um, they give you, like, a sample lesson you can use. So we started with one called advocacy, so it's kind of reinforcing that. See something, say something. Like, if something feels off, seems off, what can you do to advocate in a situation like that? Um, like, speak up. Say, for example, if somebody makes a joke that is, um, is something like what Sarah had described, what should you do as a friend, as an advocate for those people? Yeah, and so we've gone around and work, right now, working through fifth and sixth grade TAs. We did seven and eight last week. We're on to fifth and six now, uh, seven and eight, two weeks ago, and fifth and six this week.
Um, and I'm also attending the Upstandards viewing, um, within Slate Valley Thursday night. Um, they're working with the Vermont State Colleges, um, also do the increase in hazing harassment and bullying, and I've reached out to the company that they have contracted with to show that, and I was hoping to share that with our admin team as well. Just to have some more of that parent involvement, um, and those students that have been involved, um, with these HHBs. We, of course, have brought in parents and had those conversations and restorative, um, educational piece to it as well. All great kids, and, um, as we've said, in all these cases, we'd rather it happen here, so we can have that conversation and learning experience with them, um, as opposed to in high school or in the workplace where, uh, maybe those conversations won't happen, and it'll just be a consequence, um, and not kind of lesson learned. First-grade classes join eighth-grade science, um, to talk about waves and types of medium. They had a great time. Uh, bridges, I talked a little bit about that, that's Concept Quest, um, enrichment resources. So we were able to, um, purchase that through Essar Funds. Uh, xylophones were also purchased through Essar Funds, and some decodable text through school specialty through Essar Funds. Thank you, Louis.
Is that the right number on the xylophone?
Yes, we are in the wrong business term.
Cool.
That is the correct number. Yeah. I think Louis asked the same question, we sent it over.
A lot of my chair.
He's like, what? I'm like, I know, I know, I know, but.
Auto-tune.
Yeah. Um, seventh and eighth grade student council, they completed their four fall activities. They're so awesome. So Jack-o'-lantern TA contest, uh, we had our first dance, themes were Red Ribbon Week, um, and they wrapped up stuff of us. We have over fifteen hundred, um, donations that were given, which was great. We were here on the snow day loading up the bus, Ms. Manavell and Ms. Bathlon. Where, uh, Ms. Manavell and the fifth and sixth grade TA ambassadors, again, a great group of kids. Uh, they're, uh, they held their first monthly student assembly, uh, for kindergarten through fourth grade. And this is something that I had wished we had years ago, and Ms. Manavell's just taking it with our kids, and, um, it's just awesome to see. They, they planned the whole thing. It is great. It's not a long, uh, assembly, but again, it's just student-led. It's, it's fun. EST, as Mike talked a little bit about, um, first cycle of intervention meetings, they're on to the next. So we did, oh, we looked at Spring Bit Cap, uh, Fast Bridge and Sabers. I did click on, I'm, I apologize, you can look at the Sabers data presentation on here. Um, I'm not gonna show.
Talk about it next, um, I have it on the agenda for next time.
Okay.
For the Sabers, because it wasn't in the.
Okay, I, it's in my board report, and it wa, it was meant to be in there. I'm not sure why it wasn't in there, but I will just say, tomorrow is when teachers have time to review Sabers data. And the graph is in there for you to look at. If you want to add it to the agenda next time, we can as well. And basically, we schedule that through our monthly, uh, PLC meetings. After those assessments are completed, for teachers to talk about any students that may be flagged. And then those teachers give those names to Tracy Sabaka, our family school coordinator, Kate Manavell, guidance counselor, and Liz Yato, our behavior specialist. So then they meet separately and say, these are the students that teachers have concerns about or may have flagged themselves. Uh, let's make sure that we're touching base with these kids. They have a, they're a well-oiled machine, so that's what we do. I'm not gonna read through all of these things for physical plant, and I'm not just do the time, I'm gonna read all the happening celebrations. We have a lot of stuff going on. Challenges, uh, Mike laughed when he reviewed my principal's report. I don't know what you said, but you're like. Challenges, uh, Mike laughed when he reviewed my principal's report. I don't know what you said, but you're like.
That's the same one.
Same one, pretty blunt. We continue to be short-staffed. Um, it is a full-team effort here at Rutland Town School. It continues to be. People are covering other classes. Mr. Huscock, I will just, I mean, he was finding, we had no custodians yesterday, and he was finding the urine tabs in the custodian's office. I mean, it is, we are all hands on deck. We had, um, a student, myself, uh, Keith and Ms. Manneville yesterday with the cafeteria tables. I mean, I can't even lift those things up. Um, we are short-staffed, so anybody that's interested, anybody watching tonight, please. Ellen Coyle, GRCSU Central Office, please reach out to her. Um, we could definitely, we need some substitutes. Uh, it's cold season unfortunately too. Here we are.
Sarah?
Yeah.
Sarah, can I, can I clarify, are you short-staffed or are we just lacking subs? Because I think those are.
We're both, both.
Okay, so I think we just need to understand, yeah.
Yep, but we, we're lacking substitutes, um, but we are also, we are still in need of two pair educators for our school. Um, we are still looking for a full-time special educator and we are looking for a long-term sub for first grade and second grade.
Thank you for listing those.
Yep, absolutely. And then our enrollment, those numbers are listed there as well. And that's it. Any questions?
With the fast bridge, the teachers review the data. Do they review the data with the students at all?
Uh, yes, we're middle school.
I was just wondering whether it's different. A little different test than last year.
Yeah, and I think that's also like with our new MTSS model, so I used to say to middle school kids when we did maps, if you get flagged in maps and if you don't take this seriously, we're gonna put you in intervention. And we saw our middle school scores skyrocket. Because sometimes they just lose interest. I mean, I was one of those kids. I'm like, nah, I'll try a little bit, fill in the dot. At that time, they weren't computer adaptive tasks. Right? And I'm like, I, I just want, right, Scantrons, back in the day. So, um, we, we were able to use that with our students. And then they learned quickly last year, like, I don't go to intervention, you have something that you gotta do. But I think we have a lot, a lot of our kids are vested in their learning and know that it's important, and we still do have a lot of safety nets in place. So we say, you know, if you don't score well on this, we, we want to work with you to make sure that you learn this because it's important. But we also have some kids that put a lot of, and parents put a lot of pressure on themselves and their students, and we, so it's really knowing kids. So there's a few kids that we don't really highlight these scores, because if they don't show growth a certain amount, they put a lot of pressure on themselves, and it's meant for a screener, it's one point.
Yeah.
So typically with middle school, yes, we do, uh, but it really depends on the student.
Thank you.
Sure. Sorry if I went quickly. I just know it's late and.
It's good.
I don't need to read everything word for word.
No problem. Alright, um, so from the board chair report, um, I'm going to keep it very short for today. Did I, oh, forgot. Sorry. Go to personnel, contract recommendations. Let me pull that up. Thank you, Tim. Alright, we have, um, support staff, which is for informational purposes only. Roseanne Krupp as a pre-K para at 1,865 an hour. Susan Perry and Sarah Davis each, uh, halftime custodian, um, Susan at 1,668 an hour, Sarah at 1,765 an hour. And John Kerstetter as a full-time custodian at 1,959 an hour. And then extracurricular, uh, we have Amanda McIntyre as a yearbook advisor at 1,000 stipend. Kelly Tra- Traia for seventh and eighth grade, girls' basketball coach, 1,000 each. Um, Tom Veldy, seventh grade boys' basketball coach, $1,000 stipend. William Tyler, eighth grade boys' basketball coach, $1,000 stipend. Dennis Van Buren, a rock climbing coach, um, declined the stipend. And in lieu of that, asked for $250 to be donated to the Rutland class, or Rutland Town class of 2027. Um, any discussion? Um, I, I was curious, is, um, why would we, why would he not donate the whole stipend to the class? Oh, it's only 250? Okay.
Before taxes.
Okay. That makes more sense to me. Everything else was 1,000. So I was like, why is it only 1,000? Yeah, okay.
Make a motion to approve those?
Thank you, Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
And Chris, we moved resignations to after executive session, so we could discuss that during that, so we're not doing that now. And then vacancies are, um, already mentioned by Sarah and in your, in the bucket online to review. Alright, now on to the board chair report. Um, I really don't have a whole lot. I did want to go over the goals and, um, just review that. So I was pulling that up here. Okay. Um, so the goals that we, um, formed at the retreat in July were exploring the needs for and cost of finishing the second floor of Rutland Town School, and if reasonable, getting it on the ballot for voter approval in March. I think we're working on that. Number two is looking into reintroducing lifetime sports at Rutland Town School. I think we're doing that.
Check.
Check. Um, increased student growth academically using multiple pieces of data and providing resources and professional development to support that growth. Uh, I think we're working on that right now by getting that information, um, through Al and both of you, um, about testing. I think we'll continue to look at that, um, for the VCAP or Cognia, whenever those tests are not embargoed anymore. And we look forward to hearing about, um, you know, or seeing the next set of data and seeing what you've done in the middle and what, how it has impacted it. So that's great. So we'll continue doing that. Um, and going along that, if you, uh, find that there's professional development that you think would be helpful, um, that isn't budgeted for, please make sure that you let us know. And last goal was increased community connection by adding student and staff highlights to the agenda for all monthly meetings. And I've really enjoyed all that, and I appreciate the teachers that have signed up and come in so far, and can't wait to see who else comes in at future meetings, so. I think we're doing a pretty good job on that. Um, that being said, at our, uh, school board conference, um, they did kind of highlight that there are certain board governance protocols that, uh, we should be following, and one of the, those is a self-evaluation of board, of how we're doing as a board as far as governance goes. Um, so we'll be discussing that at a future, um, meeting. Just wanted to give you a heads up on that, some, just kind of self-reflection on how we're doing as a board. Moving on to policies. We have four or five second read policies. The D4, visitors, volunteers and work-study students. F13, harassment, hazing, bullying prevention for students or of students. F23, the GRCSU equity policy. G9, the responsible computer network internet use. And seventh grade class trip policy. Are there any comments or discussion on those? Hey, Jeff? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And we have four first read policies. B4, notice of non-discrimination. C1, board meetings, agenda preparation and distribution. D2, professional development. And F12, weapons and firearms. And I need a motion or?
Make a motion?
Colin, is that you? Alright, Colin, to move those forward at second reads. Um, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Colin. Alright, um, our next meeting will be December 12th, uh, at 6:00 PM in the library. We do not have any teacher, staff or community with us right now, um, so I will have, entertain a motion to move into executive session for personnel discussions, um, and a superintendent evaluation discussion, which is also related to personnel.
So moved.
Thank you, Colin. So at 8:32 PM, we are moving into executive session. We'll take a brief, um, rest to collect the microphones and move into that. So we'll start again at 8:40 PM.